Thank you. Let's move on to approval of the agenda. Any changes on the agenda? We may just move out of order just a little bit because we do have a presenter tonight, but other than that, everything on the agenda is, will get covered. Could I get a motion to accept the agenda?
The agenda?
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Seeing and hearing them, please call roll.
Yes.
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 Anybody in the audience who would like to address the board? Seeing nobody in the audience that wants to address the board, we'll move on. We're going to skip down to new business, and we'll cover the first item A here, and then we'll come back and start at the administrators' report and work through the rest of it. This agenda items review and consider approval of letter of support for a 10-year extension of the Renaissance Zone program. Ms. Sirmak, welcome.
Hi. Good evening, President Wolf and school board members. Like you said, I am Madison Sirmak. I am the Business Development Director here at the city of Mandan, and tonight I am going to discuss the 2025 program renewal and hopefully get us support from you guys. I have a little presentation if you want to show up on the screen. I'll go a little closer. All right, so the Mandan Renaissance Zone was established in 2005, so almost 20 years ago. It's a tool that the state came up with to help cities revitalize their communities, especially in the downtown area. That is by offering both state and local tax incentives for five years. Both residents and business owners are provided with an incentive to invest in the community. And those, the tax exemption is the complete exemption on value of building, so it does not include the land or special assessments. From 2005 to present, we have had 92 projects completed with over $30 million in private investments. On average, the cost of property tax incentive for Renaissance Zone projects is recouped within two years and three months after property reenters the tax rolls. You can kind of see our Renaissance Zone boundary. I have on there 35 block area, but we do have 37 physical blocks, and with a total of 35 blocks, counting half blocks, which would be federally exempt, government-owned buildings, so those blocks would count as half blocks. There are 399 total properties in the Mandan Renaissance Zone, 180 commercial, 192 residential, and 27 exempt buildings. And then, I believe in 2020, this was added, a two-block non-contiguous area, which is on Memorial Highway. It includes some businesses like Farland Properties, Faulkner's, XL Homes, Marshall Lumber, and it's kind of, the Renaissance Zone Committee chose this area at the time to get the properties over there to want to entice them to redevelop. We haven't had any right now, but hoping that as Memorial Highway gets redone, we see more redevelopment over there. So types of completed projects we've had with a total of 33 rehab projects, 38 leases, 10 new constructions, four residentials, and seven purchased with improvements, and three leased improvements. And to do, we mostly do have rehab projects, and to be qualified, the applicant comes in with the true value of the building, whatever that is, the applicant needs to put in 50% of improvements into that building. With 80%, that needs to be capital improvements in order to get that five-year 100% taxing property tax. And here's just an example of a project not long ago that we just went through, and that is the Dakota Customs Building now. Midwest Rentals was the LLC that did the rehab application, and then Dakota Customs was the lease project. And we've had completed Renaissance Zone projects between 2005 and present. We've resulted in 12 retained, 25 expanded, and 21 new businesses. Other benefits include sales tax revenue, retained jobs, and additional needed products and services in our community. And just a little data and analytics with the assessed values, the beginning assessed values versus the new assessed values, starting in 2005 to present, you can see that the blue is beginning assessed and the orange is the new assessed. So on average, which I said, the cost of the property tax incentive for Renaissance Zone projects is recouped within two years and three months after property reenters the tax rolls. So that would be for all entities, us, the county, you guys, parks. So the value of beginning assessments on projects from 2005 to present totaled at $9.9 million, and the value of new assessments on completed projects from 2005 to 2024 increased to a total of $28.6 million. The average new assessed property value increased by approximately 109% from 2005 to 2024. So it was a big increase. All right, and so some legislative changes that had occurred in the 68th Legislative Assembly. There was many of them, but the one that the Renaissance Zone Committee just wanted to pursue was the Renaissance Zone extension, maybe granted for up 10 years. Previously, it was five, kept at five years. Future recommendations may include to have two islands. Right now, we have the island of Memorial Highway. Another top contender we have for an island would be the old man, old high school site. That's on our top list. So yeah, the next steps is that the, this program does expire August 31st, and state law does require to have support from local school districts for the renewal, and we greatly ask for your continued support this evening.
All right. Thank you.
Any questions?
Any questions for Ms. Sirmak? Any questions? I just, I just got a question. You got to get approval from not just us, but county and everybody, right?
Correct.
Who do you all need to get to, and kind of what's the status on them?
President Wolf and school board members, you guys are our first.
Okay.
For the support, we'll need it from the county, which is in a couple of weeks, I'll go to them. Parks, I'll go to them next week, and then City Commission will be tomorrow.
Okay. I was just curious where, what the status was on that. Dr. Bits, you got a question?
Yeah. You had mentioned two islands, and I think we had spoken a little bit today about the old high school property being possibly one of those other islands. That would need to be decided by the 31st as well, if we do that?
Nope. That is, that can be throughout the whole time. This just, this just needs to be for the renewal extension. We can always have a, which we've been talking about with the Renaissance Zone Committee, but that can come up whenever, and we can just, it kind of just has to be a group approval from the Renaissance Zone Committee, which they were, again, top contender would be the island, and if you guys do think that would be a great choice as well, we'd probably pursue that.
I personally do. I think that would be great, yeah.
Any other questions? So tonight, really, what you're looking for is our support, correct?
Yep.
Just to make sure we understand that we're all on the same page here. All right. Go ahead. Thank you. We have a motion. We have a second?
I'll second that.
We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? I personally, just seeing what's happened around the city, has really been very beneficial too, and I think it helps bring people over here and do different things. So I think it's a good thing also. I know we give up a little, probably a little bit of revenue in the short term, but in the long term, I think we're better off all the way around, so that's my personal opinion. All right. Any comments, questions? Seeing and hearing them, please call roll.
Yes.
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 Yes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good luck with the rest of them.
Thank you.
All right. We'll go back now to the administrators' report, 25, 26 enrollment data. Dr. Bits?
Correct. And I handed out a sheet. I pulled it today. I didn't put it in the packet. I wanted to have a, anytime I do it, it's a snapshot in time, but the later I do it, the more accurate it is. And if you look at the packet I sent in front of you, you can see that last year, we started school late. It was the end of August, August 28th, but on the first day of school, we had 4,543 kids. If you look at the bottom, that's minusing our homeschool students and our private school students that attend as well. As of today, this afternoon, when I printed this, we're down a little bit. We have 4,466 students. That's still more than we ended last school year with. When I did this, Mrs. Power, who is our registrar, still had about 10 more registrations to put in. We have kids coming in every day and registering. I do think we're going to get pretty close to where we started last school year. One, I guess, area of concern that I have, if you look at our kindergarten class, in the yellow highlighted sheet, we're at, we only have 284 kindergarteners. Last year, we started with 330. When you look at some of our upper elementary classes, we're at 380, 390 in fourth and fifth grade. So I mean, that's a little bit of concern. We're starting to go the other way with kindergarten. And I guess that's a concern for us. We're hoping that it's just a couple-year blip, and that comes back, but when I visit with Bismarck, their kindergarten numbers are way down as well. And then if you turn to the third page, this is the, we hire, we contract with RSP to give us enrollment projections. You can see their number is 44, 49 is what they project. We're right there right now. They actually are light in our high school and in our middle school. Our elementary is where our enrollment's down, and that's a big part of that is kindergarten. We're down about 91 kids from where they projected we'd be in the elementary level. And again, this, it's early. We're starting school on August 19th this year. Our next meeting is the 18th of August. I want to have a better number for you then, but just an update of kind of where we are right now and concerns that we have. I can answer any questions you have.
All right. Any questions? Go ahead.
Kindergarten class sizes look great. No, we do, our fourth and fifth grade numbers are not good. Or some, in some buildings are not great. We're doing our best to balance it where we can.
All right. Any other questions? Thank you, Dr. Bits, for the update. Next item is the consent agenda. The only item on that is the approve the previous board minutes from July 21st, 2025. What are the wishes of the board on the consent agenda?
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
We have a motion. We have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Please call roll.
Yes.
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 Yes. Next item on the agenda is unfinished business. Review and consider a second and final reading of the following policies, ILB, personal electronic communications, and IGA, patriotic exercises. Normally, we would run these on the consent agenda, but we included them in unfinished businesses in case somebody wanted to have some further discussions around this. So Dr. Rederath, anything you want to add on that?
I just made a few minor changes after meeting with both the middle school and the high school, and you'll see just on page eight of the agenda, or of the packet, under personal electronic communications, we just put that earbuds are included in that Bluetooth-enabled piece, because I think that's going to be a big thing, is the AirPods and all of that. And then on page 12, just cleaned it up to indicate that we can establish rules for disciplinary action. We planned to outline those in both our high school and middle school handbooks that you approved last time as well. So that was just more cleaning it up. My intention with both of these, and I can go into the patriotic exercise, one, two, on page 15, I missed. We had put it in the high school handbook, but it needs to be in policy, too, that if a student is of age to vote in an election, we are required to allow them to do that during the school day. It doesn't, they have to agree at a mutual time with their administrator on when to go and do that, but we have to allow that opportunity. So I added that line into the patriotic exercise one. Just a reminder, too, I do plan to, what you approved today will go into effect for the school year, but I do plan to bring these to policy and personnel as well as the school year goes to take a look at it, and then we can always make further adjustments as we get into the year.
Thank you. Any questions on any of these? Comments? Seeing none, what are the wishes of the board? Oh, go ahead.
I do have one, because I just don't get it. One, we have a patriotic policy, so is we, but the board recognizes that the beliefs of some students and teachers prohibit their participation. What would those beliefs be that would prohibit their participation?
There are some religions that don't allow you to do a pledge to a country. I think they do it just to their god, or I think...
I don't understand. It makes sense. I don't understand. So...
I am not sure either, but I know there is. There are some religions that they choose not to. This says they have an opportunity to say, and they don't have to. And we are, I can guarantee you that sometime today, one of our 4,500 kids is going to say, "Not today. I'm not doing it." And, you know, we have to decide that that's their right to not, they have an opportunity, they don't have to participate.
And we did, right? Agree with it or not, we did pull this from the North Dakota School Board's template and legal guidance, too, on what we need to have in a policy to protect us legally as well.
I'm not going to die in the middle. It's just sees, first step in getting a problem. It's very bad. But don't bring this religious component once you make it up.
Just a quick question for you, and if we get rid of the first sentence, that sentence? I mean, because the next sentence says no person shall be required to participate in these exercises. It really says the same thing.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with that.
You're talking the very first sentence of the policy?
No, the board recognizes that the beliefs, that, I'm just asking.
Yeah. No, we can strike that. It doesn't change the intent of the policy in any way.
I'm fine with that.
What's your thoughts? All right. What are the wishes of the board, then, on these two policies?
Well, I would move that we accept these policies as is with the, with said sentence stricken from, from there.
And that sentence is the board recognizes that the beliefs of some students and teachers prohibit their participation, correct?
Yes, I will strike the first sentence of the third paragraph.
I just want to make sure we're all on the same page there in relation to, because I think the next paragraph gives them that out anyway, personally, but, so, all right. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Any further discussion on it? Any further discussion? Any further comments? Seeing, hearing them, please call roll.
Yes.
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 Yes. And don't forget, these will go back to policy, so we'll probably see them again in the future.
I'll bring them back to policy and personnel. I'm thinking probably unless something comes up late winter, early spring, let's, let's put them into place, see if we have any issues, and then we can kind of revisit from there.
Perhaps Mr. Hogan wants to be a guest speaker at that policy and personnel meeting.
Next item, we're going to go to new business item B, review and consider approval of teaching contracts for Ben Rorick welding at Mandan High School. Dr. Bits?
Correct. And you have a contract in front of you. It's a little different. Mr. Rorick is a member of a union, and he has a pension through that union, and he doesn't want to give that pension up. He's a licensed teacher. He has a North Dakota teaching license, has gone through the background check, has gone through the transition to teaching program. He actually taught at BSC previously. We would like to hire him. He does not want to give up his pension. So our contract is going to be with the Burn Boiler and Mechanical Incorporated, which, and we will pay them, and they will pay him. They will cover his social security, his health insurance, all the benefits that go along with it. He will serve as our Skills USA teacher, the extracurricular component. When I do the math, we're within nickels of each other. So I think this is about what we would pay. It's just, we're not going to pay the individual. We're going to pay the group, and they are going to pay him. This is legal. Fargo Education Association took the Fargo School Board to court over a similar issue last year. The court was unanimous in that this is legal to do. It's a great opportunity for, it allows us to have a welding teacher for our kids. So it would be our recommendation that you approve this contract. And I can answer any questions on it, if you have any.
Any questions? Seeing none, what are the wishes of the board?
I would move that we accept the, the teaching contract with Mr. Rorick.
It's actually with Burn Boiler Mechanical for Ben Rorick. Just to make sure we get the motion correct.
Yes.
Is that the way you want it?
Yes. Thank you.
Could we get a second?
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Please call roll.
Yes.
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 Yes. Next item on the agenda is review and consider approval of the audit engagement letter. Mr. Legacy?
Yes. Included in your packet is our audit engagement letter with Haga Comer to audit fiscal year 25 for the Mandan schools. This is something, I'll be honest, we probably need to bid out in the future. I have not went for a bid. We're in the middle or nearing the end of our construction project, and I do not want to introduce a new auditor until that project is finished. It's on my calendar for March 2nd next year to get a notice out to bid these services, but for right now, I really want to stay with Haga Comer. Their proposed fee is $40,000 plus costs associated with implementing a new GASB standard. I don't know what that's going to cost as that additional fee. That standard is 76 pages related to deferred absences or compensated absences. I'm going to let them figure that out. But I would, I would recommend moving forward with Haga Comer. I'll answer any questions that you may have.
All right. Any questions?
One question, as far as the fee, then, is that, how much is that different from last year's fee? You call last year's?
I don't remember. I'll look it up and have that for you. Yep.
All right. What are the wishes of the board on this one?
I'd make the motion to approve the audit engagement letter with Haga Comer.
All right. We have a motion. We have a second. We have a second. Any further discussion? Seeing and hearing them, please call roll.
Yes.
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 Yes. Next item on the agenda is review and consider approval of open enrollment applications seeking a deadline waiver. Dr. Rederath?
Yes, you'll see three of them. Two are with one family, one's with others, so two different families, and our recommendation would be to accept them.
All right. Thank you. What are the wishes of the board?
I would move that we approve the open enrollment applications.
All right. We have a motion. We have a second.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Comments, questions? Seeing and hearing them, please call roll.
Yes.
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 Yes. Next item on the agenda is review and consider approval of fiscal year 26 preliminary budget on expenditures, revenue, mill levies. Mr. Legacy?
Yes, included in your packet is our preliminary budget for the year. I'm going to give this to you at a very high level this time. This is going to come back to the board on August 18th at our retreat. Our public budget hearing will be September 15th, and then you'll get to see this one last time, October 6th, for final approval. So just want to lay that timeframe out, so plenty of time, ask questions, give me a call, find me if you have any questions on the budget. I'm going to start with our expenditures. Projecting to close the year with about $67.4 million in expenditures. Next year's budget would actually be slightly less, 67.1. That's odd, we don't normally go backwards. Some reasons for that, last year, we purchased about $600,000 in laptops for our teachers. That was a one-time expense. We had some one-time expenditures for the new high school. And then we are not filling some open para positions and open custodial positions, actually quite a few. We have, I don't want to say we're overstaffed, but we've had to take a very detailed look at our budget. 83% of our costs are staff-related. We are not letting anybody go, but we do have to make some operational changes. It's, it's going to hurt. I'm going to tell our principals on Wednesday at our admin meeting that our schools, when custodians call out sick, are not going to be as clean as they have been. It's disappointing, but it's the reality that, that we're living in this year. One quick note, you'll see a, on their special ed coordinator, we budgeted $143,000 last year. Next year, that goes to zero. That was a position Arliss Koski filled for us. She retired. That position has been rehired. It's being held under Morton Sue. We are not going to miss out on those services. It's just changing how we're going to pay for them next year. So are there any questions on the expenditures? Not? I'm going to flip to our revenue page. Again, we'll start at the bottom. Our projected final revenue for the year, just under 67 million. Next year's preliminary budget of 65.7. This year, we put in our sale of land at the new high school site. We sold two lots to Tri-Energy Senics. We also liquidated our assets at the high school. That really inflated our revenue number this year. I am not projecting any land sales in next year's budget. We're going to have that opportunity. I think some will happen. I'm just not going to put them on paper because they are so uncertain right now. Then going back to the top, something new this year with legislative session, you'll see our general fund property taxes, and then we have our board discretionary mill levy and the tuition levy. In previous years, the general fund property taxes and board discretionary mill levy were included as one-line item. We were allowed to levy up to 70 mils in the past. We did not. We levied 60 mils plus .45 mils last year. So that .45 is now what's considered that board discretionary mill levy. That's why they're split going forward. Both of those levies are capped at 3% annual growth. So just know that going forward, that those will hold different line items. The tuition levy is new for us. I'm budgeting $760,000 next year. That has always been allowable. We have not tapped into that levy in the past. I feel going forward, we're going to need to use those dollars. We can use the tuition levy to pay for services for tuition that our students need outside of our district. We pay a large amount of cost to Boys and Girls Ranch to educate students, Manchester House, other services that we can't offer through our district, we still have to pay for them. So those costs are increasing. I think we, we really need to capture that revenue that is available to us to try and help balance the budget. Right in the middle of page, 3110, per pupil state aid. I'll point out that's, that's 67% of our revenue in the general fund comes from the state, a 2.5% increase on the per pupil payment, plus the enrollment increases are going to help us out next year. And then looking at the bottom section, those numbers that start with the, with the And then looking at the bottom section, those numbers that start with the, with the fours, that's our federal funds. I know there's been a lot of discussion and a lot of concern with federal funds recently. I want to make you all aware that we do have our allocations for Title I, Title II, Title IV, and Title VI. About 10 minutes before the meeting started, we got the email from DPI. We got our allocations for Title II and Title IV. That's a very good feeling. So all the concerns about those grants, we have them. We have our allocations for next year. That is good. The CLSD grant, the very last one, we're projecting $900,000 revenue this year, none next year. We knew that was coming. That's not a surprise. That's a grant that we've been able to take advantage of for the past seven years. We knew that this was the last year for the grant. We have been phasing out and you'll continue to see us phase out of that grant going forward. Overall, looking at about a $1.3 million deficit next year. Again, if we sell some property, that changes that pretty quickly, but it's kind of a dark picture light right now. Projecting going forward, if our enrollment stays static over the next couple of years, this will be the worst year for a deficit, but we are looking at a couple of difficult years.
Mr. Legacy, do you have an idea where we're going to be at at any fund balance based on that?
I just looked at that. I believe we're at 12% with this year's. That brings us down to, I believe, 9.9 and a half percent, I believe, at the end of fiscal year 26.
Okay. Where does that get us in relation to borrowing funds? Does that change our ratings?
Yeah, we want to stay above 10%. Moody's rating, if we fall below 10%, they could downgrade our credit rating. Yes.
All right. Thank you.
Yeah, I don't anticipate selling any bonds, but.
No, I don't either, but you know, you'd like to keep it up.
Yes, we definitely would. Yep. Any questions on the revenue? Okay. Moving forward to the levy page, you'll see two charts. The top chart is our preliminary levy I'm proposing for this current year. The bottom chart is last year. Again, you can see our general fund, 60 mils. That's where we're capped. In the future, that's a 3% growth. We will not be able to grow past 3%. Board discretionary, that's new, .55 mils this year. Then the tuition levy, that is new for us. That's 3.86 mils that we have not levied for in the past and we'll use that to pay down those tuition costs for just, for students that need services outside of our district. The miscellaneous fund is also capped. Our maximum is 12 mils, but we are capped at 3% growth. So 11.1 mils this year is our maximum that we can go to. Our building fund is capped at 18 mils. That was voter approved in 19, I'm going to get this wrong, I want to say 76?
71.
Yeah, it's in the seventies. We are capped, that is also capped at 3% growth. So if our, if we grow above 3%, we won't be able to capture that growth. Special assessments, levying 3.77, that is not capped. Special assessments are just like you pay on your residential property. If we do street repairs, storm sewer repairs, we are responsible for those costs. We can levy the costs that we're responsible for. And then sinking in interest is our voter-approved debt. So 34.28 mils next year for our debt on the high school, Lakewood, Red Trail. That might be about it. Again, a small tax increase and that is going to go to the tuition fund for next year. And again, this is the first time you're seeing this. We have plenty of time to discuss and change if needed, but I will stand for any questions that you may have.
I have one question for you.
Yeah.
Is the 3% cap based on dollars or mils?
Dollars.
Okay. That's what I thought. I was just.
Yes.
Couldn't remember.
Yep. And then, just so you know, if you do the math later tonight, the 3% is not just a straight 3%. The cap, the 3% does not apply to new growth. So we've been given preliminary numbers from the city and the county. So these numbers are going to change a little bit, but they're pretty close.